On the meeting order, I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 19, 2023, regular scheduled Port Clinton City Council meeting in the Linda Hartlove Chambers at Port Clinton City Hall. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, Lord's Prayer, and all the signs of those who have been present.
To the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy kingdom, power, and glory be with us. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. The court, please call the roll. Beth Gilman?
Here.
Margaret Phillips?
Here.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Here.
Pat Hobus?
Here.
Jerry Trolley?
Present.
Kathy King?
Here.
Thank you. Counsel, you previously received the December 12, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam President, I would move that the approval be given for the December 12 minutes for the council.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
What else?
Any discussion? We have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Trolley to approve the December 12, 2023 regular meeting minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries.
Wow.
Minutes are approved. Chair notes and certifications we made regarding compliance of the rules and notifications of this meeting. We have no guest presentation, no public comments, but executives report, officers' reports. Counsel, under third readings today, there's ordinance 29-23, and there will be some amendments. You all have that, and the amendments are highlighted in red. First readings, we have ordinance 31-23, ordinance 32-23, and resolution 2314. Administration has asked that they all be passed on their first reading due to time-sensitive matters. They will not be assigned to any committee. And Ms. Shanker will talk about the resolution on her time, and then if you have any questions on 32-23, Mr. Colston can answer those. Also, as elected officials, everyone has to take sort of a public record screen sunshine laws as required one time during your term. The city understands completion of the CPRT requirements has been met for the following individuals during the current term expiring December 31, 2023. Additionally, regulations allow for the requirements to be met by proxy, in other words, by designating individuals on behalf of the elected officials. Completed requirements include the following. Dana Shanker completed in 2021. Lisa Sartor completed in 2022. And further on behalf of Mike Steyer, Pat Hobus completed in 2023. And further on behalf of Jerry Trolley and Kathy King. Are there any objections that stated? Okay. Seeing none, would the court please make a proper record of the meeting minutes that this was done? Okay. Thank you. Congratulations to the new elected officials on this morning.
Thank you.
I believe we have a really good group. I'll work all together, which is good. And I'd just like to wish everyone a happy holidays, and that is all I have this evening. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of council, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. That concludes my report this evening.
Oh, my God.
Is that our present?
I said Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Okay. The auditor is not with us. Any treasurers report?
Yes. As of, excuse me, December 18, 2023, the following are totals for 2023. Bed tax, $327,891.73. And for watercraft tax, it is $20,730.50.
Thank you. Law Director, please report.
Thank you, Madam President. We have an ordinance. It's amending the income tax section in our codified ordinances. This basically mimics what the Ohio revised code is doing. So these are changes that the Ohio revised code is making. We're a statutory city, so we follow the code, so we change ours in order to mimic what they have. The two big changes are they included a brand-new section I under the net profit return, net profit, income subject to net profit tax, alternative enforcement. And section I deals with qualifying remote employee or owner, so it talks about that. That is now incorporated into the revised code and are, or will be incorporated in our codified ordinances. And then the other portion they spoke about was the annual return, and they talked about extensions to file the annual return. And so that's the other amendments that we have. All the amendments are in bold italic, so you can see them easily. But I would ask that this be passed on the first read. This goes into effect on January 1, 2024. And nothing further. Madam President, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for the law director? Okay.
Well, I did. Are these like all the Ohio laws that were passed then?
Yep.
The only one I didn't know if that was in here or not, like I just happened to see that minors wouldn't have to pay the city tax anymore. Is that in here?
We've always had that in ours, so we did not have to make an amendment to add that. But anyone under the age of 18, the city of Port Clinton has always had, did not have to pay taxes on any work that they do. Apparently, other municipalities didn't have it, so it was suggested that the ones that don't have it change it, but we were already also.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. When we move on to supervisors' reports, Mr. Colston?
Yes, a couple things, Madam President. We had a talk recently about the H2O applications. Just to give you an update, Julie gave me this today. Nine people from last year have not turned in their for next year. They had till December 1. My question to you as counsel, she's taken a few more, so if all nine did, we would need $1,350 to cover that, which in years past, you guys have added on to that program. Really, she still has $463 left, so there's six people that still come on for that number if they wanted to come on. My first question is, would you allow the people that went past the deadline to get back on that were on it before? And would you be willing to put it into the budget, and we can obviously make amendments later, for $1,350 to cover that?
May I make a motion? Madam President, I'd like to make a motion on both subjects to allow the people, to give them a little more leeway. Can you leave the end of the motions?
That's fine. I don't know that we have to do an ordinance or anything like that for that, but I just wanted to get a feel for the room. You can talk in the committee if you want to, too, down the road, but I just wanted to say to Julie that yes, she can take it up to that number, and that would be the maximum. To give those people the opportunity to get back in, because you know how that goes.
Right.
Okay.
Continuing the motions, it increased to $1,350. Was that what?
That was the number yesterday.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Trolley to extend the deadline and increase the budget by the amount stated. A second by Mrs. Gilman. Would the court please call the roll? Kathy King?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Could I ask, I didn't write down, what date did you say?
The end of the year.
End of the year? Okay. Just wanted to make sure that's what I thought. Second thing is on ordinance 32-23, that's for the republic services. And as I stated before, we, previous predecessor, made a five-year deal with three one-year options going forward. So we got prices from them. Basically, it's up 6%. The total for next year that we're doing, we're only doing the one year, we're not doing a three-year deal, would be $24.40, up from, basically, I think right now we paid $23.02, so it's $69.06, supposedly. Talking with Mrs. King, we've, there's some discrepancies in some of the billing. I actually have a Zoom call tomorrow to talk about some of those. We figured from administration side, one year is a good deal. We'll be starting infrastructure project. We talked to them about getting some lighter trucks and some different things. If those things don't come out, my recommendation would be to go out to bids after that, after the one-year deal, and see where we stand. So I would ask if you pass it on the first one, because in the contract, it says we're supposed to give them 90 days before it's up, and that was up the end of March, so we wouldn't have the timeframe if I wait till January to do that. So just so you know, there is continuing talks with them about the problems that I've brought up to you guys. And the billing is across the board. Some people were charged fuel surcharges, some were not. We should have all been being charged approximately $3 and some odd cents for fuel. Excuse me, I know my bill did, some other peoples did not, and some peoples were ridiculous numbers, per Mrs. King. It's ludicrous, and it makes no sense. So from my standpoint, I understand why people get mad when bills are not consistent. There was a couple that were like $74, didn't even, I don't even know what that was. It should have been 72 something, or 72 something. And so anyways, we are working on that. We'll have a call tomorrow. The billing will get taken care of, she assured me of that with the other stuff. Now, the people that weren't getting billed fuel surcharges will probably have it on the bill starting next year, just so everybody understands. But the rates are in the contract, and they're like $3 per that quarter, so. And obviously, if you pay a year, it's a little bit less. If you're a senior citizen, you have a little bit less, so they shouldn't be higher, it should be lower in those cases. So just to bring that up, and I would just ask that you would adopt that this year. And I think that's it. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. Enjoy. Go ahead, Mr. Trolley.
Talking about the rubbish and recycled pick-up, you know, there's been talk that a lot of the recycled materials aren't getting recycled anymore.
Well, I can, I can answer that question. From what we heard, it was 60%. The other 40 goes to the dump, because contamination, people don't do it right, and, you know, like the liner in a pizza box, if that's in there, the whole pizza box is gone. They're not taking that out. You have a lid up that's wrong, it's not supposed to be on there, that gets tossed, too.
Do you see them continuing that program? Or you see them?
Oh, no, they really won't. So I called Solid Waste District, and we talked about that. As we go forward, we'll have more discussion on that. Obviously, it's 24 trips on our streets with your trucks.
I know, we talked about it.
And I can't get any more of these dumpsters like we have out here, or recycle bins that we have here, or other places. That will not happen, so this will be the one we keep. So OSS, the Solid Waste District, hopes we keep it. Most people don't get it and then turn it away.
Right, right, right.
Most people are looking to get into that, so I think that would cause some problems. But, you know, I would ask you guys to talk to your people and see if they're, what they think about bringing their stuff down here instead of going to the streets.
Because, you know, millions of dollars we're going to put in these roads, and then these trucks are going to tear up.
But that's, that's my biggest concern. And that's, that's realistically, for me, my only concern.
Right.
I think that's trouble. So we're going to have to keep an eye on it. Where we're starting our process, I don't think we'll, it's a problem for the rest of this year, but as these streets get reconstructed and stuff.
Next couple of years, probably, won't be a problem.
For the first year, this way, we'll be okay.
Right.
After that, we need to have some serious discussion, and nobody seems to be going back to the two guys behind dumping it in there. That's where your lighter trucks are. Everybody's going automated, those are bigger trucks, so. The weights, I've talked to a couple people, their weights are very similar when the, with the trucks unloaded and loaded, so. We are working on it, I just wanted to tell you that, and that's where we're headed, so. Thank you very much.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You took a lot of time.
I want to make up for you. I felt bad for you.
Making up for the extra time again.
No, those are two things I think you needed to know about.
Thank you. Now we move on to committee reports. Finance Minister.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance Committee, that last Tuesday, whenever it was, we'll be back. To discuss ordinances 28-23, 29-23, and we all voted to recommend pass or shut. Okay? And that's it.
Environment Public Works, Mr. Trolley.
Yes, you guys finally got my last committee meetings minutes, so I might ask for a little more. So I have, thank you.
Thank you. Safety Services, Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. We have not met and don't expect to until January for something.
Okay. Thank you. Economic and Community Development, Ms. Gilman?
Nothing today, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to Correspondents. Under Correspondents, we have the Planning Commission and Zoning Appeals for October 26, 2023 meeting minutes. Finance Committee, meeting minutes for December 12, 2023. Environment Public Works Committee, meeting minutes for November 28, 2023. Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, Economic Development, Transfer Form Tracks Application, Kira's Place LLC, 109 East Second Street, Port Clinton, Ohio.
Madam President, have anything been said about, because it's coming into us from Columbus, it's not a local transfer of licenses.
Amy Edgerriff? Yeah, it's not local usually, Ms. Phillips.
Well, I read the little.
Do you know anything more about it?
Yes, this license is from Lebanon, Ohio, and this is for the green space that's on the corner of Second and Maple. There'll be the previous fire truck that was at Put-in-Bay, our, will be there. It has gone through our ARB and was approved. This is just a, essentially a D5, so they don't have any requirements for food. That's why they're not using the local ones that we have available, because of the problems that everyone has had prior, and you'll see more D5s probably in the near future.
So is that part of that little building there?
They will be using that building where it used to be Johnston's?
Right.
For restrooms, that we were told.
Oh, okay.
Because they do have to have restrooms per.
And the bar itself will be on fire?
The fire truck.
It's a fire truck. It goes around the fire truck like they had it put.
Right. There's seats around it, and the bartender's in the center of tech situation.
I'm too old to go to Put-in-Bay, so I don't remember.
You said fire truck, though, right?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
With that, Madam President, and would we approve the correspondence?
Madam President, and we waive our right to contest hearing about the license.
There is no pre-voir hearing on this, as of yet. We will get a second piece of legislation for that. This is just knowledge of this.
So you just received the information?
This information?
Okay.
Excuse me, Chief Scott is aware of it, and he has no issue. Okay. Thank you.
So it just came in as regular correspondence?
It's regular, and then we'll get actual, the license once they get, this is just notification of the transfer. Once we get their license with their number on it, then we will, we can do what you were saying.
Okay, thank you. I.
Yes, thank you.
So you seconded then? I seconded Ms. Phillips.
I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Gilman, to confirm the correspondence as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the correspondence are approved. We move on to readings of ordinances and resolutions. Our third readings of ordinance and resolution, we have ordinance 28-23. Would the court please read by title and summary only ordinance 28-23.
Ordinance number 28-23, and ordinance appropriating certain funds for operation of the city of Port Clinton, Ohio.
Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 28-23?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance 28-23.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion by Mrs. Hobus, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to adopt ordinance 28-23. Would the court, please call the roll. Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven, zero. Ordinance 28-23 is adopted. The court, please read by title and summary only ordinance 29-23.
Ordinance number 29-23, and ordinance amending ordinance number 3-23 as amended in the city of Port Clinton.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 29-23?
Madam President, I move to adopt ordinance 29-23.
Amendment.
Oh, or is that what?
It says ordinance on here.
Yeah, but you were. I thought you were going to do the amendment.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, I could make a motion to approve the amended amendment to ordinance 29-23. Amendment one.
And all of Council has received that, and the amendments for the auditor, which is needed for the balance of the year, which he had advised at last meeting, they're in red, so it's just to amend the budget this year.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, I have a motion to amend ordinance 29-23 as an amendment one by Mrs. Hobus, seconded by Mr. Trolley. Would the court please call the roll? Kathy King?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven, zero. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 29-23 as amended?
Madam President, I move to adopt ordinance 29-23 as amended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Hobus, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to adopt ordinance 29-23 as amended. Would the court please call the roll? Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven, zero. Ordinance 29-23 is amended, is hereby adopted. I have no second readings, we move on to first readings. Will the court read by title and summary only ordinance 31-23?
Ordinance number 31-23, norance amending sections 183.062, 183.094, and 183.10 of chapter 183 of the Port Clinton Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 31-23?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move to waive three required readings.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. This is the ordinance that the law director was discussing and explained, just so someone understands that. Any further discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Hobus, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to waive the three required readings. Would the court please call the roll? Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven, zero, three required readings, or waive, does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 31-23?
Madam President, I move to retain the emergency clause.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Hobus, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to retain the emergency clauses to ordinance 31-23. Would the court please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven, zero. Emergency clauses hereby retained as to ordinance 31-23. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 31-23?
Madam President, I move to adopt ordinance 31-23.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
As the law director said, that these are things that because we're a statute, statutory city, that we're issued. What if we said no?
We can't.
I mean, so I have to say yes?
Well, you can vote however you like to vote, but to be in.
I'm fine with that, but I'm just.
Yeah, but to be in compliance, which we have to, we have the ordinances, and we also have to follow state code.
Right.
So this ordinance will, is changed to adopt what the state has already passed.
I just think it's odd that we have to do it until we vote on our name.
Madam President, is it possible for him to say pass rather than yes or no?
You can abstain if you would like to abstain.
If you really don't like it.
No, I mean, what if we all vote no?
Yeah.
What if we all vote no?
We have to follow the laws of Ohio. We have to follow the laws of Ohio. That's basically.
Fine. I'm sorry for the question.
Oh, no. No, I don't think it's a bad.
No, our code, when you go to, like, AM Legal and read our ordinances that are posted, we have them, so we have to update ours to match the state, essentially, is what it is.
I understand.
That's about all it is. But, yeah, I don't know what would happen if.
That's all I wanted to know.
I don't want to find out.
I'm sorry to take a.
No, it's good. I don't know. I don't know what would happen either, actually.
And the law director's not here to answer that question.
Yes.
I think we can get sued if.
If we're not in compliance, probably, yeah.
Probably.
So.
Any further discussion? Okay. Would the court please call, or, yeah, I have a motion by Mrs. Hobus, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to adopt ordinance 31-23. Would the court please call the roll? Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kathy Gangel?
Kelly Gangel.
I don't know what my issues are with this.
Seven syllables.
Kathy King?
Yes.
And Jerry Trolley.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven, zero. Ordinance 31-23 is hereby adopted. Would the court please read by title and summary only ordinance 32-23?
Ordinance number 32-23, an ordinance authorizing and directing the director of safety service to enter to a one-year agreement extension with republic services for the curbside pickup and disposal of garbage, rubbish, rubbish, and recyclable materials and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 32-23?
Madam President?
Mr. Trolley?
Make a motion to waive the three required readings for ordinance 32-23.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hobus. Any discussion?
Mr. Colston, is there anything added to, have they added an N4 for the increase?
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hobus, to waive the three required readings as to ordinance 32-23.
Madam President? Make a motion to waive the three required readings for ordinance 32-23.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hobus. Any discussion?
Thank you. Mr. Colston, is there anything added to, have they added an N4 for the increase? Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hobus, to waive the three required readings as to ordinance 32-23. Would the court please call the roll? Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion carries by a vote of seven, zero, three required readings are hereby waived. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 32-23?
Madam President?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 32-23.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Excuse me.
We have to retain the emergency clause.
There is no emergency clause.
There isn't here, but there is here, and she said emergency clause. There is.
There's actually a ordinance.
Yeah. Not in the title.
I didn't notice that. Okay, Madam President, motion to retain the emergency clause.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. It's not on that paper.
Right. I was reading off the agenda.
Do you withdraw your motion to adopt?
Yes, yes. I withdraw my motion to adopt and make a motion to retain the emergency clause.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hobus. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hobus, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance 32-23. Would the court please call the roll? Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven, zero. The emergency clause is hereby retained. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 32-23?
Madam President?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 32-23.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hobus. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hobus, to retain the emergency clause as to ordinance 32-23. Would the court please call the roll? Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven, zero. The emergency clause is hereby retained. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 32-23?
Madam President?
Yes.
Make the motion to adopt ordinance 32-23.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hobus. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Trolley, seconded by Mrs. Hobus, to adopt ordinance 32-23. Would the court please call the roll? Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven, zero. Ordinance 32-23 is hereby adopted. Would the court please read by title and summary only, resolution 23-14?
Resolution 23-14, a resolution approving or redemption of a certificate of deposit held at First Federal Savings and Loan Association, of a low range provide for expenses and other expenditures of the city of Port Clinton.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any action as to resolution 23-13?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move to waive the three required readings.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trolley. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Hobus, seconded by Mr. Trolley, to waive the three required readings as to resolution 23-14. Would the court please call the roll? Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolley?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by a vote of seven, zero. Three required readings are hereby waived as to resolution 23-14. Does Counsel wish to take any further action as to resolution 23-14?
Madam President, I move to adopt resolution.